Friends, I'm going to call this Celine City Council Work Meeting to order on Monday, March the 6th at 6:01 PM. Members present are myself, Mayor Morrow, councilmembers CO, Dylan, Girbaugh, McClellan, and Tahar. Councilwoman Mitchell did indicate to staff that she might be running a few minutes late, but she will be here. From city staff, we have city manager Campbell, clerk Royal, treasurer Bennett, city superintendent, engineer Rubel, parks and rec director Scruggs, DPW director Fordice, as well as the maintenance director at the rec center. Brian, we appreciate you being here this evening. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted unless there are amendments.
So moved?
Moved as submitted by Dylan, seconded by councilwoman McClellan. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of approving the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. In addition to the material you received in your packet this evening, there is a memo regarding the summary of debt payments for fiscal year 2017 through 2037. Can councilwoman Dylan request that? Okay? And then, per councilmember Girbaugh's request, there are some visuals of the rec center roof that were just distributed by director Scruggs. Again, we are taking up two issues tonight. The rec center roof is nothing that, well, it's not going to come as a surprise to anybody at the dais this evening. It is an ongoing issue that we hope to resolve, to resolve thoroughly and expeditiously. It is staff's request that this item be acted upon on the agenda this evening to comply with a deadline. Again, staff does a good job of not forcing us to move too quickly on large public policy matters, but they do have a compelling reason why they're doing so tonight. So we're going to discuss this one first and then move on to our previously scheduled item, which is capital improvements. I would remind everyone to please speak into the microphones because we are recording tonight, is that correct? Very good. Unless there are questions for me, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Campbell for a brief comment.
Thank you, Mayor. So you have before you the information on the rec center roof item, as well as the capital improvement, and specifically the street discussion. So I'm going to be very brief, and then if there's any questions for me, and then I'm going to turn over to Scott Smith, our city attorney. But as my memo reflects, we did invite the folks that were involved back in 2010-11, the last time the roof failed. And again, as it reflects in my memo, no new information was gleaned from that, and so we're moving forward. And it is from a maintenance standpoint to get it repaired and to hopefully, again, as Mr. Mays, a while back when he came to us, to discuss his analysis in, you know, of looking at and improving the entire building envelope of the building structure, not obviously not just focusing on the roof area that has failed, that it is fairly urgent that we proceed from staff's perspective. But however, it is certainly, it's a big decision, no doubt, but we're here to talk about that a little bit and then to answer questions the best we can. So unless there's any questions for me, I'll pass it over to Mr. Smith.
I probably should talk fairly briefly because Mr. Mays has more information than I do and can discuss this much more thoroughly than I can, but my understanding is that at this point, the rec center roof repair and replacement, and it's more than a roof at this point, it's addressing all of the issues in the roof, but that will require addressing issues in walls and other parts of the rec center. We currently have a situation, as I understand it, and he can explain it a lot better than I can, where moisture is getting up underneath the roof through the walls and through other places. It's coming up and around and underneath the roof, therefore saturating some of the insulation and other materials. And that has a number of effects. It degrades the insulation and causes degradation of the roofing materials. It also has the effect of now of beginning to corrode and otherwise degrade some of the structural aspects of the building. So you will see in some of the pictures that he's taken, for example, that there's corrosion and so forth evident on some of the steel beams. All of that would be addressed in the kind of approach that he's asking for. Now, there are questions related to it, and one question related to it is whether the HVAC system is capable of moving the air around in a way that's appropriate to best preserve that roof. And our best judgment after our meeting last week is that it probably has the capacity to do that. The question is, given its age, what's its useful life, and that's going to require more examination as well. So you have before you two resolutions. One resolution would authorize the design work by Mr. Mays in the realm of about $36,000 to get in and determine what needs to be done with the roof, the wall panels, the insulation, and other aspects of the building. The second part of that is that if he determines after working with a couple of HVAC experts that more work is needed on the HVAC system, then we would spend the money necessary for that design work. So you're looking at not to exceed cost of $10,000 for that. That's one resolution. The second resolution is a notice of intent resolution that would authorize the publication of a notice of referendum to issue bonds. Now, we've sized that at $2.1 million, not because we think that the cost of the project's going to be anywhere near that. Our best estimate at this point is that the project will be about $1.2 million, but if the HVAC system needs major work, that could add $500,000 or more, and there are cost of issuance, and I've learned, and Roger Swatz, my partner, has learned, that you always in the notice of intent give yourself plenty of room because this, it's kind of like this old house, right? Once you get into this older building, you could discover things that we haven't seen to date, so we wanted to make sure there's plenty of room. The notice of intent resolution does not obligate you to issue bonds, it doesn't authorize the issuance of bonds, it doesn't authorize the issuance of debt. It just puts the public on notice and gives them a chance to referend, to file a petition for a referendum should they decide to do so. It doesn't authorize the construction of the improvements, it doesn't do anything else other than issue the notice at this point. So to do any of those other things requires coming back to the council for further approvals. If there are no questions beyond that, then I can let the experts tell you what's going on.
Mr. Mays, thank you, Scott. We are very pleased to have you with us again this evening. Thank you for your time. The floor is yours, we appreciate your expert analysis. And then, Ms. Scruggs, do you want to make some comments after, Mr. Mays? After we'll open up for questions from the council. Mr. Mays?
Thank you. I think Scott did a very good job of basically telling you exactly what was going on with the system. And when I was here last time, I think I explained, this is basically a moisture and air issue that's causing the roof system to fail, along with the wall systems to fail. I was over to the site a week ago, and you could see all of the area, especially close to the pool area, moisture coming out through the walls of the building, and it was directly from where the vertical panels, you could see where the water's traveling down through those vertical panels into the masonry. And then, in addition to that, when I was around to the, I mean, the north side of the facility there where the gymnasium area is, I was looking at the frost on the walls in certain locations, and it appeared to me that there's areas where the fiberglass insulation that was in these walls has actually sagged down, it's gotten wet and sagged down because there's areas where you didn't see any frost at all. I was there, you know, about 30 degrees when the temperature-wise, and it was a dry out, so you could really see what was happening on the frame of the building. So I'm sure that we have, you know, issues within the wall of the building, and when I was here, you know, the last time I was up there at your council meeting, I think I mentioned that we have liner panels that were installed when the building was designed and built, and that was back in 1990, 91. And I think that has also caused issues while you've been having roof replacements earlier than what I'd ever expect to have one if everything was designed, you know, correctly so it didn't have the moisture coming through the walls from the interior. The liner panels are metal panels with laps in them, and where the laps are, air is actually traveling through. And then, I think we, I think you, everybody here probably had copies of my report, I think it was provided for everyone. You can see where air is actually flowing out into the roof system, but it's also flowing outward into the exterior of the building. That's why we had icicles hanging, why you're finding that the masonry materials are, you see a lot of efflorescence. And I mean, it was just originally a design issue back in 1990, 91, and it just, it's gotten worse. Now, the extra cost that I would envision, which I can't see till we tear off, would be like the roof decking. We've got a lot of moisture that's been going into the roof system, so there's going to be areas where we either possibly might have to replace decking, or at least we'll have to do remediation on decking to stop the corrosion from progressing. And then we're going to have some equipment that we're going to have to actually raise because now the codes require a minimum of R25, where it only has a two inches of polyisole insulation. Now, that's about an R10, so it's way under insulated and single-layer insulation. So what we'll end up doing is we'll seal everything up. There's a sealed vapor retarder air barrier system at the deck, so, and all the walls, so no air's going to be traveling out of the building or into the building. But if you get a negative pressure, it'll actually pull air in, and you don't want it to do that, you want it to stay in a state where air's not going in and out of the building. So anyway, those are things that we will be dealing with, that there's going to be some, like I say, mentioned, it's corrosion caused by these kind of issues that have been happening over the years. So, you know, I think we've got a pretty good budget, but until we open it up, we're not going to know 100% of what's there. So as long as everybody understands that. So I mean, is there any questions for me that...
Before we do that, Mr. Mays, unless you have anything further, I want to give the staff the opportunity to comment, then we'll open it up for questions.
Okay.
So thank you for your, that perspective. Director Scruggs, do you care to make any comments at this time?
I mean, other than, you know, utilizing our experts to know exactly regarding the construction and what's wrong with the roof, my goal is to get this permanently fixed so that we don't run into any of these problems ever again. I think some of the, I don't know if this is the time to bring this up or not, but, you know, I am hearing some question regarding, you know, should we do this, should we not do this? Obviously, this is a huge price tag, but, you know, one thing I want everyone to know is that, you know, Celine, for a lot of years, before, pre-1991, wanted a community pool, a swimming pool. A lot of people fought long and hard to try to get something like that. An opportunity became available in 1987, 88 with Mr. Reddy's offering up $1 million to, you know, initiate a rec center. And we had a lot of support for that. This is pre-Karla, I call it BC. But, you know, hearing the stories and listening to the people that were involved in the telephone calls and talking with a lot of the businesses to gain their support financially, to help fund this and get the rec center going, it was a big deal in Celine. And when I travel around the state or I go to our state conference and talk to other people in other parks and recreation departments, Celine is very well-known, not only for the community, for its, you know, its loveliness, its quaintness, its historic aspect, its schools, its parks, but the rec center is one of the top three things that people talk about. And I am very happy that Celine has something like this. It has become a healthier community because of that. I know that a lot of the goals of hospitals, of the county, of the Judy Ivan Healthy Endowment Fund, Building Healthy Communities, which is a statewide organization, they're trying to get communities to be healthier, and we have this resource available to us, and I think it's something very valuable and something very worthwhile. That's what I'm about to say.
Thank you. Brian, you want to add anything? Good. You're good. All right. Thanks, ma'am. Unless anyone from staff has additional questions or additional comments, let's open it up to questions and comments from the dais. Mayor, Lieutenant Torth, can I start with you, and I'll work my way around to my right?
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I have a number of questions, some of which Mr. Smith answered in his introductory remarks, so I'll just go through. First, just a very, very basic question, just to be clear, we're talking about the whole roof of the rec center, not just the area above the pool. Is that correct?
That would be correct. We've looked at the entire building, the roofs and walls on the entire building.
And it would be redoing the entire roof?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, so, and a question about HVAC is mentioned, and then, at the very end, the Dectron is mentioned. So I believe those are not the same things, but could you clarify those two?
I believe when we're talking about the HVAC, we are talking about the Dectron unit.
Okay. It's, okay, so they mean the same thing? It's not two different?
Right. The Dectron unit is the air handling unit, and dehumidification system for the pool enclosure, for that whole nadatorium area. And it essentially takes a lot of that humidity and recirculates it to heat our pools.
Okay. Okay, so when we talk about the HVAC system first mentioned on the first page of the memorandum, that's really the Dectron, that's not the HVAC system for the whole building?
Correct.
Okay. Let's see, so in looking at the, well, this may be, since the bond notice is just a notice and not an actual anything beyond that, this may be a premature question, but if we issued this bond, how does that fit into our overall picture, into the context of our limitations to the city's taxing power in general? How does, how would that affect our ability to do other bonding if needed and our limits?
It would add, and then, I guess I'm going to look at the exact percentage of our ceiling. Yeah. So, but it certainly would add to the ceiling, I mean, we have a fair amount of capacity, and it's really not advocating that we get there, you know, quicker than we need to.
No, and you know me well enough to know I would not advocate that either.
Absolutely. But there...
You're safely within your capacity.
Yes, yes.
Right.
So I asked Rodney about that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And then, so again, about bonding, if there, a vote occurred, as described in the documents, and the bond is defeated in a vote, what happens then to the project? Are we dead in the water, or...
We would have to do our best to figure out another alternative.
Okay.
But that, you know, depending, I mean, sometimes communities will do inner fund borrowings, for instance, from utilities, and obviously paying that back at an established interest rate, that type of thing. That could be a possibility. I don't mean that large, we currently, I don't know that any of our funds would be able to do that all on its own.
Okay. Thank you. I think that's it for right now.
Thank you. Mr. CO, actually, Ms. Smith, we're just going around now, entertaining questions for either our expert, Mr. Mays, legal counsel, or staff. I'll take with you since you just got here. Yep? So you'll follow Mr. Girbaugh. Mr. CO, please.
In the documents, you mentioned not to exceed of 2.1 million. What's your estimate of the likelihood that we would not exceed 2.1 million?
Well, from us looking at the facility, what we're looking at the walls and the roof, we were looking at, you know, be a million or, and with the expenses and sign, all that, about 1.2. The likelihood of going over that is, because of the decking, there are some things that I don't know. We've established some money based on history at other facilities that are similar to this, and we don't think it's going to go up that much more. It won't be, I can't even foresee the 2 million in hopes, not just hopes, but I had a mechanical engineer look at the study that you had a design back in 2015 for the HVAC. And if that system is operating properly, we're not going to have to spend that much money on HVAC. The question was with that Dectron unit, and I'm not an HVAC expert, but, I mean, it's got a cabinet, it's got, you may have to change some parts in it, but I don't foresee a huge expense in it. But, you know, I think we were talking, Brian, someone told you that the expectancy of a system like that was, what, 12 years or so? Yeah, and, you know, again, I can't tell you, I remember, we need to have a mechanical engineer. The engineer that I talked to, Jim Hill, Hill Engineering, the mechanical engineer, he's recommending that we bring the Dectron people in, as far as the manufacturer, to look at the unit, and verify, you know, if it's operating properly. Bring in the engineer that designed the HVAC system for this Dectron or for the pool area in 2015 where that work was done, along with a balancing contractor. Now, we don't foresee that the initial cost of that is going to be, I think you were allowing with the $10,000 to hear on that, but unless there's something drastically wrong mechanically with it, it shouldn't be that much additional monies. I wish I could tell you more, but...
I just, I understand.
Let me tell you where the 2.1 came from. Todd and I were talking a little bit, and we said, okay, 1.2 is the current estimate to do the roof. If that goes up 10, 15%, we could go up another $2 million or so to 1.4. If we had to replace that Dectron unit and do some other HVAC work, we're told that that could be in the half-million dollar range, which gets us up to 1.9, so we just, and then there are issuance costs to issue the bonds and so forth, so we went to 2.1 just to make sure that there was plenty of room, because what you don't want to do on the notice of intent is to have to go back and reissue it because your cost went up.
Right.
So we think the costs are going to be in the range of 1.2 million plus the cost of issuance. We're just making sure that you only have to issue that notice of intent once.
Let me rephrase the question, then. I'm not so concerned about the HVAC and the Dectron units and the unknown cost there as I am of the structure itself. And are you reasonably certain that the amount of money you've determined it would take to correct the structure is good, or is there the possibility that once we begin to peel layers off, we go, oh, my, my, my? There's other things going on.
From looking at the structure, the structural steel, I didn't find any real heavy corrosion in the structural steel that couldn't take a little remediation. The decking is where there'd be some cost associated with that. I don't recall the exact percentage we put in, but, you know, it's easy to have a 10% of the decking be, to a point where we may either have to replace it, or we'll have to, you power broom it with a wire brush and then use coralline or different types of materials to stop the corrosion or remediate corrosion. I, you know, if you threw another $100,000 on, from what my estimate, I think we'd be comfortable.
Okay. I won't belabor it anymore. I just was trying to come to some reasonable reassurance for myself that we're covered. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. CO. Ms. Dylan, please.
Thank you. I'm going to piggyback on Mr. CO's questions about, and now that we're sort of throwing numbers out, Mr. Smith, do you really feel comfortable at 2.1?
Yeah.
Because, I mean, you're kind of right up against the wall right there, right now, at 1.9, the 2 million, you know, right there, and if he has unknown issues...
If that's taken into account, he has unknown issues. So he said it might go up 100,000, I gave him 200, and we're figuring 500 for the Dectron unit, that's, should be plenty ample, and so we feel pretty comfortable with that number.
And what is the cost of the issuance?
It'll be 100, 150,000, depending on whether we do a public sale and have to print an official statement, and whether there's an underwriter's discount and so forth.
So then, right, then aren't you, once again, back up right at the threshold?
If we had to do all of those things, if his estimate turned out to be $200,000 low, if the Dectron unit had to be replaced, we're still fairly comfortable at 2.1.
Would we be better off waiting and having the Dectron evaluated before we make this...
The problem with that is that, well, we feel, when we had conversations last week when we were first putting the resolution together, we thought that there was a reasonable possibility that the Dectron unit was undersized for the facility. We've learned since then that that's not the case. So probably all we're going to have to do is do some maintenance and upkeep on that unit, replace bearings, replace some other moving parts and so forth, because it still has some useful life left to it. And you tell me if I'm wrong, you're more familiar with it than anybody.
The machine's getting fatigued, but I feel it's...
The machine's getting fatigued, but I feel it's a solid machine. Siemens has done a great job maintaining it.
And by the way, the current Dectron is a 13-year-old piece of machinery, and the life expectancy is generally about 15 to 20 years, if you're really squeaking it out. Our last Dectron, we had it from 1991 to 2004, and that one, from the very beginning, was not engineered correctly. That was undersized, and when we replaced it in 2004, we moved it up to the roof, and we're at 13 years at this point, and it seems to have been, be running efficiently.
So then, with that being said, I mean, are we getting one bite at the apple here? Is it something that you would want to replace at this point, having the monies available versus not doing something and then in a year or two years, looking at this enormous expense again? I mean, I mean, yeah, I mean...
I don't know the answer to that. I mean, this, the Dectron is a, it's vital to operating a pool enclosure. It is a very expensive piece of equipment, it's a $500,000 piece of equipment. So I don't know if, and it's still operating and running, so do you replace, I guess, my question is the same as yours, do you take out something that's operating and replace it before its useful lifespan? I don't, I don't know the answer.
Part of the difficulty here is, like a lot of HVAC equipment, okay, it's got a stated useful life. The furnace in your house has a stated useful life. My kids are buying a house now. My kids are buying a house now. That furnace is 35 years old. You would expect a furnace to last 20, 25 years. But, you know, it may have a useful life long beyond what is estimated or warranted as the useful life for the device. And so the question is, if we've got two years of a 15-year useful life, you've got 10, 20 percent of the useful life left on that, do you replace it at that point or not? And until we get some engineering done and some design work done, it's premature to make that judgment call. And because you really, you know, you don't want to be in the habit of discarding things with 20 percent of the useful life left on them. And perhaps even more than that, because it's going to last longer than the warranted useful life.
No, I understand that. And I think that was sort of what my point was, is that having these units evaluated before we're making a financial decision seems like the more prudent thing to be done.
Well, the only thing with that is then you'll miss this construction season. Because there's a 45-day notice of referendum on it. And if you wait until the design work is all done and the evaluation is all done, you're looking, what are you estimating, 60 days or so to do the design?
Yeah, we're looking at at least two months, the time we take it apart and what the weather's going to be now we have to make things apart. So, and then we had 18 weeks of actual construction.
Right.
And then you can have some bad weather or whatever. So this would take us through October as it is. And we're looking to be prepared to depart in November.
Well, and some of the insulation that we're putting in, we're told that you can't put that insulation in during cold weather. So it has to go in before the winter weather starts setting in. And if you've got an 18-week construction period, because part of the way the construction's being designed is so that you can keep the facility open the whole time. And in order to do that, it's going to take 18 weeks plus eight weeks to design it. So we're looking at, you know, 26 weeks.
So then we have started this process three months ago.
Well, coulda, woulda, shoulda, you can always play that game, but we were trying, we were trying to get a handle on who is responsible for what and what kinds of options were available. If you want to push it up to 2.3 million, there's no harm in doing that.
It's not my money, yeah, that's okay, sure.
Well, you're not spending, you're not, this doesn't authorize spending any money. This just puts people on notice that, so that you have the referendum period run. That's all.
Okay. I'll move off that. I just have, my next question is, and it's in no disrespect to you, Mr. Mays, is have we solicited for a second opinion? And like I said, in no disrespect to you, we've relied on experts before and we've kind of, you know, gotten short end of the deal. Do we have other experts that are willing to concur with what's being said here? Is this an industry standard?
We did, when, before we chose Mays Consulting, we did, we brought in another company, and I apologize. Do you guys remember the name?
Structure Tech.
Structure Tech out of Kalamazoo. And basically, we interviewed both firms. And based on talking to, I know Carla called and talked to some of the other folks that they've done projects with and the like, and just felt that, that Mays Consulting was the better, better quality firm to go with.
Okay, but they did not evaluate our actual facility? You just made the decision to go with Mays? Is that what you're saying? I just want to clarify.
It's correct, right.
Structure Tech did, we did an offer with quality companies. They sent out our please and those were the two qualified companies they interviewed. And they did come on site and take a look at the facility.
Okay, but they didn't, they did not provide any opinions or anything as to what their conclusion was? It was just a site evaluation for a bit?
And telling them what the project was and that we're looking for.
Right, they're not, they're not going to, they're not going to offer an opinion of that magnitude unless you have them under contract.
Right. And so I'm just saying, we did not, we do not have a second opinion?
No, we typically, we try...
You would have to pay for that site.
Right.
Right, we typically, I mean, we, so, you know, we go through the process. So just like we go through the process of designing other projects, whether it's streets, parks, wherever it might be, go through that process. And we come up with the consultant to utilize.
I understand that. I just want to, we've just had issues with roofs before that were based on experts. And they have failed. And so, like I said, no disrespect, Mr. Mays. A little shy of just jumping back in the pool. So the other thing I wanted to ask is, are we, are we exploring any other funding opportunities through the county? This is, this facility is open to the entire school district, but we're looking at taxing only Celine residents for it? Is there any recouping outside of the city?
At this current time, this is the only one, the current strategy.
So we will not explore other options?
I didn't say that. I said this is currently where we're at with this particular item.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Mr. Wallen, please.
Yeah, a lot of my questions have already been answered. But I guess for Mr. Mays, is there any issue, like imminent safety issue other than the wind taking it and placing the roof someplace else?
I don't think there's anything imminent now. We've already been able to do the temporary repairs. So we're holding the roof in place. Like I mentioned before, this was a temporary fix. And we're looking basically to hold it over the winter, the six-month period. The corrosion will still keep continuing because we've got a lot of moisture in that system. But there's not anything imminent as far as something falling through, anything like that. We've taken the weight off the roof. All the sandbags have come off the roof. So I'm not so worried about anything like that. And then when we actually get into the actual construction, we'll be doing interior protection on the inside of the building. And that will stop any corrosion or anything from falling into, onto the people. And if we were, like, say, if we were taking out any decking, for instance, we would, that area would be roped off and we would have somebody inside watching. So our company really pushes safety real strong, so.
Okay. And you mentioned earlier about the moisture being inside into the insulation and that kind of thing. Is there any issues with mold or any kind of mold remediation kind of things that you're foreseeing having to deal with?
Well, I, we're going to be removing all the insulation. The insulation is paper-faced material. So anytime you have paper and water and, you know, the temperature inside the building, you've got the, there's a possibility of mold. You know, I don't know for sure, but we're going to be remediating that, taking all that material, you know, off-site. You're not going to have that anymore. So, you know, if we find anything that is suspect, that does stay there, then we'll make sure that's addressed.
And is that included in the pricing that we already have?
Well...
Discussed?
I don't foresee, because after we get rid of the paper-faced isle and that's all going, the rest of the materials are all metals or, you know, they're inorganic materials. So we wouldn't have mold growing on those. So I don't foresee any issues there.
Okay. Some extra cost involved in mold remediation and time or anything like that?
No, no, nothing to do with that.
And then as far as the Dextron, you've mentioned that you may have to raise it because of the new regulations with insulation?
Maybe, let me, I'll explain that. The Dextron is already high enough. But there's other equipment on the roof that's throughout the rest of the facility that some of that equipment is sitting so close to the roof now. And we have to have a minimum of eight inches above the top of our roof to where the equipment sets on a curb. So we may have to put curb extensions on. So that means we're going to have to pull up equipment. Usually set A-frames over and lift it up and put the new curb extensions on, any additional duct work. But that's, you know, things that we already know that we're going to have to do.
Okay, so that's already included. But how would that affect that equipment? I guess I was thinking that if you have to raise the Dextron and it's only got, you know, five years useful life left and you're going to do all these modifications to it, does that affect its useful life at all? Or whatever equipment that you're moving and changing?
No, it's not going to change the life of the equipment at all. What we're doing is raising it up for elevation.
What you're doing is just, you're going to put eight inches of insulation in there. So you have to raise it up above the insulation. So if it's duct work underneath, you're extending, expanding the duct. If it's a pipe underneath or whatever.
Okay. We're not talking about like major...
Yeah.
If you recall, when you took a look up on the roof, there's a lot of roof units, like fans and air conditioning units that are not already raised. So those are the things that he's talking about. The Dextron would not have to be...
Okay. Because I was just thinking, if you have to go and move this whole thing, maybe that would...
What we have, what we have now is two inches of insulation. And we're going to raise it up to five inches of, five inches of insulation. And then there's going to be some tapered insulation in different areas too that cause water to flow toward a drain. So, you know, that's what we're talking about.
Okay, okay.
If you looked at, if you look at some of the photos that I provided, you can see some of the rooftop units. They're smaller units. And then you can also see the Dextron, which is...
The largest unit.
Which is the largest unit. And it's already raised up probably three feet.
Okay, okay. My concern was that if you're going to be moving and jostling all this equipment, that it may affect how that equipment functions. But if it's just duct work and stuff, okay. And the, you don't think that it has another winter's worth of, the temporary fix doesn't have another winter's worth of life in it?
I would not recommend that at all because we've got so much humidity in there that it's going to cause more corrosion to happen. And you've got screws going through decking that, you know, we're not sure how good the decking is now. So if the corrosion continues, the fasteners could pull right up through.
And then again, if, let's say, you know, can't figure out a way to pay for it, we have to, it has to last another winter or whatever, what is the safety issue? I mean, we would start running into safety issues then at that point? Stuff flying off the roof and hitting somebody or falling down through and into the pool, that kind of thing?
I'd say flying off the roof would be your issue with the membrane. Because once it gets up in the air, air can get underneath it. Then it's like a sail. It can just start stripping.
Okay, I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yerba.
Just a couple of questions against on the debt service. So what are we looking at in terms of potentially the total payback over the 20 years? Between 2.5, 3 million dollars? More?
You've got in your packet some sample debt schedules. A 20-year and a 15-year debt schedule. At 20 years, it's almost 3 million one. If you issued 2.1 million dollars in debt. And at 15 years, it's about 2.8 million dollars if you issued 2.1 million dollars in debt. Obviously, if the debt's closer to 1.2, that goes down markedly.
One of my questions are, and I think this was what I brought up a few months ago, was my concern is that this is a 25-year-old facility. And we're now addressing a roof that's less than 10 years old.
Well, that's true for part of the roof.
Right.
Half the roof is.
Well, part of the other issue is concern for the building and the other aspects. Just as you mentioned, there's other equipment, air conditioning units and so forth, which I have to imagine are the originals to the building. They've been replaced, all of them?
When we did the renovation. When we did the renovation in 2006, both air conditioning units, which are the two other larger units on top of the building. One services the first floor, one services the second floor. Those were replaced at that time. And then additional air conditioning units, smaller units were added because we added a family changing room and the cabana and an addition onto the weight room, the nautilus room.
So there isn't any other major equipment needs that need to be replaced? Can Brian be aware?
Not that I'm aware of right now.
Major renovation to the pools or any...
Right. You know, we have gotten into an agreement with, originally we had Campbell, Inc. And then now Siemens, which they do the guaranteed... Preventative maintenance, I'm sorry. So they, they are doing a very thorough job in making sure that all of our equipment is running effectively, efficiently. The repairs, they're, basically, they own the equipment. And if something goes wrong on it, they replace that for us. We still have responsibility for a few things. So for example, in a boiler, the non-moving parts, so... All wearable items are still our responsibility.
So those are built into our operational costs?
Correct.
And there isn't anything in terms of the pool that needs to have major renovation done to it? Or any re-coating?
The deck is, is actually, the deck needs to be redone. However, we've been putting that off just because of some of the larger capital projects that we've been doing the past couple of years.
And that's kind of where I'm looking at, is do we have any major capital projects that need to be done in the next five years for this facility that exceeds 50,000 dollars?
What we have had planned in the near future was the pool deck itself, which will need to be addressed. And then other things outside of the building. So for example, parking lots. We redid the north parking lot, but eventually Phase Two and Three will need to be redone as well.
My concern being that if we're going to issue bonds and fixing stuff, that I'd rather make sure that we got everything fixed instead of where now we're going to have to end up sacrificing things as a result of. Because at my point right now, there's other parks and things that I see going, or gone unless we can be grant for them. Salt Springs and some of the other aspects that we may not be able to do as a result of having to direct all this money towards. Have we got any plans in terms of what we potentially can gather, gather from additional increases to revenue? Do we have a 10 percent, 15 percent plan to increase our fees in July 1st?
That, I have started working on figuring out how we can, kind of what we did in 2013 when we went through and to figure out where we could, where we could support an increase. But I would like to see additional, what do you call it, amenities or, not amenities, but maybe some additional programs. So for example, maybe some specific, you know, free classes for families, specifically for teens, for younger kids, for some seniors, and including those in the membership. So making the membership value good. So for example, actually, I did this calculation right before I came. When we did our, all of the changes in 2013, so between January 1st, 2013 and now, we've had an increased membership of over 500 membership packages sold. Right now, our membership itself is hovering between, you know, 7500 and 8,000 people. And we're on our way to exceed our numbers that we sold last year. We were at 25, almost 2,600 memberships that we sold last year.
For where I'm coming from is though, I want to see whatever incremental revenue you generate goes towards this debt service. I know you want to add additional services and so forth, but that adds to operational costs. So there needs to be money coming in to help pay for this debt, not to be just all of a sudden put onto the city again as part of your, our taxes. We can't, we can't afford it because when we're coming towards with the roads and everything else, you've got to have incremental revenue coming in. I agree with Ms. Dillon. I have attempted to try and talk again with Alicia Ping and try to get money from the county, but again, that's probably a no-go. The other piece I'm wondering, when you mentioned some of the work that needs to be done that we potentially don't know. We talked about, is there any going to be masonry work or any, if you're replacing the steel around the top, correct?
We'll be replacing the siding.
The siding that goes around the top?
The siding, yes.
Are there any windows or anything in that that need to be addressed or replaced or...
I haven't investigated the windows. We weren't intending on replacing any of the windows. That close to me to hear me, okay? But yeah, we had not intended on replacing windows. I mean, I'm sure that you always put in better energy, you know, saving windows. But I didn't notice anything out there that was causing an issue from the windows.
That's my, because I know on the north side to the gym, I believe there's windows up in those steel panels. But if we're taking the panels off and we discover that the windows have issues, when you do your design review, I want to make sure all of that's been addressed. Because that's one of my concerns is that we've done stuff... because that's one of my concerns, is that we've done stuff and then discovered it after the fact, and then had to go back and rip off whatever we just put on.
Yeah. When we take the siding off, we'll be able to see. But as long as the windows have been, are flashed properly, you know, we're not going to disturb that. So if we find there's an issue, we'd bring it to your attention. But, you know, at this time, I don't know of an issue with the windows.
Because they, too, are 25, 26 years old. So depending on what could be an issue with those two. I guess for me, right now, that's my question.
Thank you. Ms. Mitchell?
Thank you. I have a specific question. Forgive me. In Arbor was a parking lot, and I was coming in from work, and that's why I was late. Can you address what experience you have had with this type of project?
Well, I have quite a bit of experience with these types of projects. Actually, I can give you just the last few years here. In Worthington, Ohio, we had a rec center there that we had to go through and do the same thing we're doing here. We worked with siding, we worked with the roofing, we had to, you know, replace the roofs and the siding. We had to put sealed vapor retarder air barrier in the system. We also, in Groveport, Ohio, we have another one. I got some pictures here if you'd like to see. But the same similar type of thing, where the roof was just floating. It was, it come up, the insulation was all warped. And so we had the same kind of issues with that facility. That was a lot larger facility than what you have. I mean, I can go way back. I had one in Corpus Christi, Texas, I worked on many years ago, too. And there's been a lot of other pool facilities in between. So, and actually, you know, this, we shouldn't be having these problems. Industry standards, like through the National Roof and Contractors Association, clear back from 1992 on, have always recommended that you have a vapor retarder, sealed vapor retarder. It's been in the standards, but a lot of the architectural community just hasn't looked at the standards. And so that's, keeps us busy. We do a lot of construction, constructability reviews for architecture firms. And I'm trying to educate them, but I can't educate them all. So hopefully that you understand.
Mm-hmm. That's really clear. Thank you. Ms. Dillon had talked about some of the things that we are, as a council, are trying to learn from. And that whole hindsight is 2020. And I think one of the concerns in the past was, you know, did we hire people with the appropriate amount of experience? And I guess I have some questions that don't have a specific answer right now. But when I sit back from this particular project, and we, as a council, have a wastewater treatment plant that we don't know yet what kind of amendments might be needed there. We also have streets. I believe that's next on our agenda. So I am just conscious of the fact that we're looking at making some very long-term decisions, and I want to make sure that we are as fiscally responsible as possible. And I'm glad to hear questions asked about other revenue possibilities. I hope we can do that. But I feel like there is, I feel like I have some specific information, but then some of the larger decisions that we need to make as a council moving forward are, those are still large in my mind. So with that, I'll stay for now. Thanks.
Thank you. Let me open it up if there are any more questions from the group. Ms. Dillon and then Mr. Yerba?
Mr. May, just one quick question. I noticed your shirt. It says consulting and evaluation services. Does your company actually perform the work, or are you consultants and hire out the work?
The work will be bid out to contractors. We're a design professional firm, and, but it will actually be bid out to multiple contractors to do the work, and then we would oversee the work. We have built into our budget, or budgeted in our proposal, to have someone on site full-time watching to make sure that it's built correctly. So, does that answer your question?
It does, and it sort of opens up a whole other issue, which is what we've had before, which is where we've got multiple contractors, and then who's left, you know, at the end of the day.
This is just like a street project we do, or our wastewater project, where you hire an engineer to do the design work and oversee the construction. But the, then you contract out for it to have roofing contractors actually do the work. Roofing and siding, kind of whatever you need. So depending on the bid specs, there'll be a bid package put out, and he functions the same way as Brian Rubel would function on other projects you have, for example.
And that's not always worked out in our best interest at times. But thank you very much.
And this question may be more for Mr. Campbell. So we're looking at, you know, $150,000, $160,000 a year in recurring debt service to prepare for this. Where do you see us cutting or bringing this money out of, if it's coming out of operations?
This would be, as we've had planned discussions with Carla, this would come out of what's being proposed, out of the 150,000, the annual 150,000 dollar subsidy, that the general fund is subsidized on average for several years to the rec center. We also, you may recall, we also currently have another bond that expires in 2025, that, I mean, there has been additional dollars, that was through cares. So, as well, which helped us, in that that was for the 2005, '06 project, the improvements that were made at the rec center. So, but that's where we were proposing that it would be funded from the revenue source.
So the $150,000, I mean, we continue to allow that to be contributed, which helped with the, I guess, other capital costs that were there. So now we're back to square one, where basically, we're just paying to fix the roof, but we'll not have revenue available to do capital costs unless we increase the revenue significantly coming into the rec center, correct?
Sorry. Could you repeat that? If we could turn off our cell phones, it'd be great. Thanks.
My question is that $150,000, which we continue to contribute each year, was basically to help for capital cost repairs and things like that. If this now is going to be dedicated to the roof, we're back to where we were, that we don't have money available to fix the things that are falling apart as part of the operational budget, unless we significantly increase the revenue?
Well, what I would say is, I mean, certainly don't disagree with that. But as far as that $150,000 subsidy was for whatever, whether it be programming, or, but it was, so there was no strings, you know, parameters put on it.
Right. But each year, we've had about $100,000 or so in capital fixes. So if you look at the budget, if I remember right, that's kind of where I'd always seen that being a qualified reason why we gave the money to the operations, because we knew you couldn't cover all that. But now we're facing that problem of the operations need to contribute. And I think we're at that point where it's got to be more than just covering the cost of operating. So, thanks. I just wanted to clarify where that $150,000 is coming from.
Yes, sir.
Any additional questions? Anybody from staff, Mr. May, the legal council, want to make any additional comments at this time? Well, let me say this, and then I want to try and understand if there's consensus to entertain the two motions that you will find on a revised agenda. It's just, I'm not, I'll share with you. No, no, it's, no, 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 that's okay. We want to make sure everyone knows what's being considered in the back, in a thoughtful, strategic way. Before I read the motions and identify if there's consensus to move forward, and if not, we simply will not entertain any motions this evening, let me state a few things for the record. First, Mr. May, we appreciate your work. Let me say that, and I don't want to belabor this point, because I think organizations get in this rut from time to time. Certainly, there have been some mistakes made in the past in terms of organizations and individuals that the city has engaged with to do a variety of jobs and assignments over the past several decades. The level of, I've used this word before, the level of incompetence is very troubling. But from the background that Ms. Scruggs has done on your firm and my own independent research, you have a pretty sterling reputation, very outstanding reputation. I have little doubt that if we were to work with you, that you would do an outstanding job. And so I thank you for your time this evening and the time that you've devoted to this project and providing analysis and staff. I want to thank Brian and Carla and Todd, of course, as well as the legal counsel, Smith, for his work on this issue. This is a difficult matter, because in a time when financial resources are finite, this is obviously not the type of thing we would want to be expending resources and time on. However, and I'm not saying this as a ragged, but as somebody who utilizes the rec center on a nearly daily basis, I can acknowledge without hesitation that it is a very valuable community resource, as Director Scruggs articulated in her opening remarks. And it must be preserved. I mean, it must be preserved. There's no debate in my mind about that. And so while it's important to look at this from the financial side of what it's going to cost to remediate, resolve these issues, I think we also have to look at it from the perspective of there's a cost to not doing anything and letting the facility languish, which I think is simply unacceptable. Now, I do agree with my colleagues, and actually, Mr. Campbell and I have had some conversations about this. We need to continue to be aggressive about identifying additional revenue streams. And I've also had conversations with Carla about making some adjustments to individual group and family memberships, and also offering maybe some additional amenities to entice more people to come in the door. That should continue to be a focus of our parks and recreation staff. But again, while I don't like having to expend the resources, and I don't like spending time having to deal with these issues, the simple fact is our recreation complex is a valuable community resource. It helps to create an identity in the Celine community, which we all appreciate, we all value, we all benefit from, and it must be preserved. So I am in favor of moving forward. And let me share with you the two motions that were enumerated on my agenda. Of course, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have, and trying to determine whether there's consensus to move forward on these. So it's a series of two motion. The first, it would be a motion to approve or not to approve the resolution authorizing the agreement of professional services for repair and or replacement for the Celine Recreation Center roof and HVAC system, excuse me, at an amount not to exceed $36,500. Okay? That would be the first motion for your consideration. The second would be a motion to approve or not to approve Resolution 2017-36, a resolution to purchase, acquire, and construct capital improvements, and to publish notice of intent of issuing municipal securities in the amount not to exceed 2.1 billion. Of course, that's, that motion is a reflection of language that exists in statute. So those are legal requirements, as Mr. Smith spoke to earlier. Mr. Smith?
Mr. Mayor, the $36,500 would be just for the roof repair. I think it should probably say $46,500 in case the inch that work is needed. We think it won't be, but.
Everybody clear on those two motions?
Could you please repeat them once more?
Yeah, exactly. So the first motion, which, again, it will be revised to reflect a different dollar amount, is taken to accommodate HVAC system, will be a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the engagement of professional services for the repair and or replacement of the Celine Recreation Center roof and HVAC system at an amount not to exceed $46,500. So an increasingly amount that previously articulated by 10 grand. And then the second motion will be a motion to approve or not to approve Resolution 2007-36, a resolution to purchase, acquire, and construct capital improvements, and to publish notice of intent to municipal securities, excuse me, in an amount not to exceed 2.1 million. Clear on those now, Councilwoman?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So I guess at this time, unless there are additional questions for staff, for our consultant, or for the legal counsel, I'm looking to see whether the majority would like to move forward on the motion that are being recommended by staff.
Just a quick, clarification on the 46,5 will cover all of the design and investigation and everything. So we will have a whole picture of what needs to be fixed on that roof.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Good question. Any other questions? Ms. Mitchell, can I start with you in terms of your feeling on the two motions? The motion would be motion A and motion B regarding rec center roof.
I'm ready to move ahead with motion A. I feel like council would benefit from a forecast, like a financial forecasting discussion to look at how are we going to balance some of the things down our way. And I heard that this is not going to burden our debt percentage, but it would be helpful to have some real numbers that go along with that, and look at what else do we need to do for the city, rather than for this narrow slice. Look at it in kind of the macro. Thanks.
One comment, just in the event that you missed it, because I don't recall specifically what time you came in.
Sure.
Mr. Smith can help you with this, although he's having a conversation with the city treasurer at the moment.
Thanks, Chris.
One of the reasons, I want to make sure that Councilwoman Mitchell heard this. One of the reasons for motion B regarding the issuance of the notice to issue municipal securities is based on a pretty finite timeline regarding construction later this year.
Yes, I read that in my packet. Yeah.
And the other important thing is, this doesn't authorize the issuance of any debt. You will have to act on other resolutions.
I see.
To authorize issuance of the debt or anything else. This just starts the notice period running.
I see.
So that we can have the 45-day referendum period running with the 60-day investigation that we're making.
So we can still exchange information, is what I'm hearing you say. This just gets the ball rolling. It's not a final decision. Excellent. Then.
And the treasurer just showed me that you've got an additional $29 million at that capacity.
Not that we want to use it.
No, I'm not suggesting you use it, but you're well away from your.
I appreciate that. Okay, thank you. Then I would be ready to move forward on both, and thanks for the clarification.
Yes, likewise, willing to move ahead on both, and would look forward to a robust discussion of our entire debt picture and obligations.
I, too, am willing to move forward in a timely manner on both items. I think it's essential, like you've stated, Mr. Mayor, that we maintain this facility that has become an integral part of how our community operates.
Ms. Dillon?
I'm ready to move forward on motion A and not on motion B.
I would be willing to move forward on both of them. I am interested in looking at the big picture, and also looking at potential of if we're going to issue a bond, making sure that we've got kind of everything covered under that. So if any updates, any other updates either to programming or to the building itself, the pool deck, I think, should be addressed if we're going to issue that bond, so.
Yeah, I'm fine with the first part. The second one is my concern where, fortunately, we aren't asking for additional millage. I mean, a referendum can be done, so if the public wants to reverse it, or get approval to have a vote, that's fine. Where I'm concerned is that we're identifying funds within the operating budget right now that may not sufficiently address concerns as it goes forward, as its ongoing, ongoing concern in operations. So it becomes an issue that it starts pushing back onto the city as another requirement or priority. And so where do we cut going forward? I'd like to see that gap narrowed by understanding exactly how much we can move forward in terms of revenue increases and bringing that money in from the operations. So I'd be more comfortable if we were able to say, $100,000 versus $150,000 in terms of what you're going to be responsible for. I know we've dedicated $150,000, but I'd like to see the revenue increase by $50,000, and hopefully guarantee that for the 20-year period. So because of the fact that we've already identified it within our operations, that we're not adding additional millage on at this point, unfortunately, we can't forego it, which I would like to see at some point, and hopefully that someday will happen. But there is a referendum out there, and if people feel strongly enough about it, they'll gather the petitions, I'm hoping.
Let's do this, then. Something just consensus to move forward on both motions, that they're both likely to pass during our regular meeting. Obviously, subsequent to that, a significant amount of value we. Obviously, subsequent to that, a significant amount of evaluation and vetting of the facility and what sort of solutions are appropriate will be done. Subsequent to that being completed, I think there's value in having another work meeting to consider all of our options moving forward. And perhaps at that time, Ms. Scruggs, maybe between you and your colleagues here at City Hall and your support in setting REC Center, perhaps you can fine tune what exactly needs to be done in regards to membership in the coming years, whether we need to increase that, what we need to do to continue to boost and grow membership by offering other services and amenities that hopefully don't have that much of an impact on the bottom line. And for my conversations with Mr. Campbell, also, I would like at that time to have maybe vetted and explored some additional revenue options as well. I think we can get some more definite answers to some of the questions that we have on that particular floor. So unless there's objection, once that, once the vetting of the facility has been done, I'll work with staff to schedule another work meeting and we'll continue to explore these issues. Okay? That sound good to everyone? All right, excellent. Mr. Mays, you are excused, sir. Thank you for your time this evening. We appreciate it. Did an excellent job addressing our questions in that service. We have about 15 minutes. Here's how this is going to go down, my friends. The capital improvement projects are, well, in my opinion, I guess you could choose to disagree with me, which you'd be wrong, are of paramount importance, and the way we invest to maintain our infrastructure is critically important. So I want to have ample time for us to discuss all and every issue relating to infrastructure and how we finance it. Because we have 15 minutes, I think it's very likely that we will not get through the entire presentation, nor will we be able to address sufficiently all the questions and concerns that you may have. So what I would like to do in that event is we have a work meeting scheduled for two weeks from today, on the 20th, beginning at 6:30. We would simply push that back to 6:00, unless there are objections, and we would consider both wastewater treatment plan and conclude our discussion on the capital improvement plan. If there's no objection, we'll proceed that way. Mr. Fornes, if you'd like to join us up front, and Mr. Ruble, you as well.
Can I just, there's no issue? So there was some conversation, and what you got presented tonight, too, was our that schedule.
Yes.
So this, so...
We're getting into budget season. We're going to be spending an awful lot of time doing an in-depth analysis of where the funds are coming from. But this information is provided to you. It's also in the budget that we provide each year. If you go to the second to the last page, you have, you know, this information's available to you in this document, and then the information about our debt ratio is provided to you on Page 8 of your financial CAFR that the auditors provide each year, so that's where I looked that number up. So when you're at home looking at this stuff, having those questions, these documents, you know, those are quick resources that you can use as well. I don't know how we want to start. We really have more than 15 minutes, and I'm not really sure unless we just go and if there's in the packet of information that you had, if you had specific questions that we could address, so that when we do do our presentation, we can, you know, save some time.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, my thought would be we could just start from the beginning of our presentation, and then when we have on the 20th, hopefully we'll have some additional time to just to get back into this, just kind of start, maybe even review if we have some questions, but I guess we can certainly start and get into it.
Let's do this. Let me add this, although I seem to be articulating this frequently. We'll let staff present this evening for the next 15 minutes. We're going to stop right around 7:30, and I'm going to let this hang around for five or 10 minutes longer, like we do at some of our work meetings. In the event that you have questions, please jot them down and email them to staff, because we will certainly have a good discussion on the 20th, but there is a lot of substance to talk about regarding the wastewater treatment plant. And obviously, that's been on many of your minds and many of our citizens' minds. So to ensure that the process moves along, let's really commit to doing that. So in the event that issues come up that you have questions about, please feel free to email them directly to Mr. Campbell, Apple before, hopefully before March 20. Who wants to kick it off? Jeff, you want to go first? Mr. Fornes?
Actually, I think...
Yeah, for Father Ruble?
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry, I deviated from the little, my apologies. Mr. Ruble, you go ahead.
Well, just briefly.
Make sure you talk to the microphone.
Just briefly, you've seen these documents before, prior years. We updated the summary of the last 20 years' activities. You can see the bottom line on Page 2. It shows that we spend approximately, after grants, about $700,000 in funds on the average in any given year. So those are out of major street funds, local street funds. And then on the updated report on the status of the grant-funded projects, I've added the Northern Arbor Street project to the list, as well as estimated the Austin Drive project and the Oak Creek Drive project, which are actually slated for this year. Those bids, actually, the agreements on the meeting later tonight with M.D. So this is, just shows the history, the trend, and also the trend and forecast for the grant-eligible projects.
Is any, Mr. Ruble? All right, Jeff?
So the first, Page 5, has a little example chart on it, and this helps define some of the terms that we've used in this analysis. On the X-axis there, we have time, everybody's got their time, and on the Y, we have the Paser rating, a 1 through 10 scale, that's designed to utilize things that you can see on the surface of a pavement to indicate things that are happening within and underneath the pavement. So it's a surface rating designed and intended to help determine structural and age-related issues in the pavement. So it's not just simply a, this looks nice, you know, so it's a 10, this looks pretty nice, so it's an 8. There's some, there's some real science behind it. And then that green line is a particular road's Paser rating over time, and that's called a deterioration curve. And then the next thing we need to look at is the CDP, which is the critical deterioration point. That's the point in a pavement's life when you switch from preventative maintenance approach to a rebuilding approach. So once you reach that critical deterioration point, it's no longer cost-effective to do preventive maintenance. Now you have to do structural things, mill and paves, complete reconstructions, things like that, expensive things. The difference between where we are today and that critical deterioration point is kind of a, I don't really like this term, it's called the remaining service life, and that's just a defined, the time between now and when preventive maintenance ends. It doesn't mean the road is useless when you get to that end of remaining service life. So we certainly have plenty of roads right now that we use that have a negative number. They have a negative remaining service life because they're past the critical deterioration point. And I wanted to talk to you about that term, because that's the criteria that I used in the analysis, because it allows for one single number to give you an idea of the health of the entire road system. Some of you were here last year and the year before that, where I brought some charts, somewhat confusing bar charts that showed over time so many fair roads, so many good roads, so many poor roads, and it was a little difficult to see the trends in that. By boiling it down to one number, you can see the trends in the overall street network Next page, Page 6, is a quick summary of where we are right now in terms of miles, the percentage of roads and cumulative percentage. So currently, we don't have 10s. You know, a 10 can only be a brand-new road or a reconstructed road, and you're only a 10 for one year, no matter what. So we don't...
So Henry, Michigan Avenue is not our road, so it's not in here at all.
Henry Street was not reconstructed. It was a mill and fill, so it's a 9. The good part about this chart is the 31% that we have at a 6. That's pretty healthy. The bad part is the 22% that we have, they're 3 and 2s. So in terms of where we are, right in the middle, we're pretty good. We're a little heavy on the poor and a little light on the good. So we just need to flip things around a little bit. I'd like to skip the next section here. These are just pictures illustrating what various Paser ratings look like. Some of you have seen these pictures before. Some of these pictures are old, so, you know, like you'll see Echo Court in here as a 1. That had been repaved, so it's no longer a 1. What I'd like to get to is Page 13. These, I've utilized our Roadsoft software to analyze various investment strategies. So these are different dollar amounts put into constructive and preventive maintenance and capital preventive maintenance activities in the roads, and what happens to the road network over the course of 10 years if we invest that much money. So right now, our overall network is at about a negative 1 in that remaining service life criteria. And the first chart, I put in our actual projected revenues over the next 10 years. And we've got a little bit of money saved up right now, so if we put all that money in, we'd jump up a little bit, but then what we have expecting coming to us over the next 10 years, we'd go from a negative 1 down to a negative 3. Not really pretty. Page 14 is just the do-nothing scenario. Back when I was in environmental remediation, we were always trained to, we had to evaluate the do-nothing scenario and see what would happen. So if we spent nothing on roads for the next 10 years, we'd be down to almost a negative 12, where almost every road completely failed at that point. 15, Page 15, getting into the strategies that lead to some of the proposals that are coming later. So this is a $900,000 a year strategy, and we get a slight improvement and then kind of hang steady, just a little bit better than we are right now, network-wide. And then bump it up to $1 million a year, and we see slow but steady improvement over the 10-year course, getting us back to a kind of a solid, a low-good, high-fair sort of average. And then the next is $2 million a year, where we see very strong, steady improvement, you know, getting us into the positives, well on the side of the Paser scale. And the information that Gary provided, he had that number of 700 and some thousand dollars that we've averaged over the past 20 years of local money. When you roll in the grants, just the line right above that, the average is a little bit more than $800,000 a year. That's money actually spent constructing, reconstructing, maintaining our road network. And those are all, some of those are 20-year-old dollars. So that 800-plus-thousand-dollar figure, you know, translates into this million-dollar range today. You know, so there were phases, you know, there was a solid decade in there where we were making tremendous progress on the road network, things were getting better, and then we kind of slowed down a lot due to the economy slowdown, things deteriorated. But that's a strong historic record that backs up what these model results show. And these are just computer model results. They're based on our real roads, but, you know, it's just a model. But that's the real world, and that shows you what it takes to keep our roads in good shape.
Well, on that happy note, let's maybe end there this evening, simply due to the fact that we need to break down these tables and, of course, provide an opportunity for those citizens who'd like to comment on one or both of our discussion items this evening, the opportunity to speak. So again, we will take up the capital improvements streets at 6:00 PM on the 20th. In the period between now and then, if you have questions, concerns, please direct them through Mr. Campbell's office. He would welcome your thoughts. At this time, under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, may comment or question to City Council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who'd like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments on the two items that we discussed this evening during our work meeting? Mrs. Hess?
Yes, regarding the pool, it appears you're not going to put it up to the people for a vote of the possible 2.1 million. A referendum was carried, I carried, years ago, and I think the rules for a referendum are 3% of the registered voters. In fact, we got that, and they didn't like the word, and we had to go back and do it again. It's a very expensive proposition, and we have the disposal plant and the roads, those are things that we are using. The REC Center, when we had the million dollars from Mr. Reddy's, he had hoped that we would be, put it next to the school, which is now Linden Court. But, and it was supposed to be just a pool, but it turned into a pool, it turned into a gym, it turned into everything, because everybody wanted the best. And the building had problems because it was a flat roof. It's had problems ever since it was built, and it probably will have more. As far as the equipment, I remember we had to pay money when I was on council to replace the lockers, because they got all rusty. And now we've got the gym floor and reseal the pool, and it's a very serious commitment. And as far as the size of our city, I don't think anyone has a REC Center quite like this, so yes, people talk about it. Thank you.
No additional comments? No additional comments, then the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn this work meeting at 7:28 PM. Moved by Mr. Girbaugh, seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. All those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye. Opposed, say nay. This meeting is adjourned.